Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Claussen for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear God, throughout our great nation's history, you have enabled imperfect people to identify ideals for government and implement a plan toward those ideals. So we stand before you this evening imperfect and in need of your enabling wisdom and guidance. Please grant these as we seek to implement a government that will allow our community to flourish physically, intellectually, emotionally, and spiritually. Please keep those safe who seek to keep us safe. Thank you for those who are willing to put themselves in peril and even perhaps make the ultimate sacrifice in protecting our community. We are grateful for we are truly blessed, and so I thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley. Councilmember Eris.
Here.
Councilmember Milan.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Here.
Mayor Woolley is out of town for a couple of days for the Michigan Municipal League's annual conference, and in her absence, the mayor pro tem is called upon to chair the meeting. The first item for consideration this evening is the consent agenda. Included in tonight's consent agenda are the following: minutes of a special city council workshop meeting held on Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, as presented; minutes of a regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, as presented; and minutes of a special city council closed session meeting held on Monday, March 12th, 2018, as presented.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be approved as listed.
Support.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Eris.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Albrecht.
Yes. The yeses have it, and the motion is adopted. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the introduction and first reading of an ordinance. This ordinance is to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, entitled Businesses, by adding a new Article IV, Massage Therapy. This is to provide for the licensing and regulations of such services and businesses, and also determination of exceptions from such licensing. And I'll ask Mr. Kingsep, our city attorney, to explain briefly the ordinance.
Okay, I'll be as brief I can. I'm going to give a little bit of history. There was a massage ordinance that many of the communities had that I can best describe as copious. There were probably 13 pages long. They described the amount of clothing, the kind of clothing you had to wear, hygienics and so forth. And obviously, that was designed to prevent the other activity, which is somewhat salacious and not legitimate. So, we actually met, the chief and I, with a detective over in Utica, who was nationally known on massage parlors and how they operated. So we adopted the ordinance, and all the cities had the same ordinance. Thank goodness, in 2008, the legislature passed Massage Therapy Act. And it is an act that really strongly licenses anyone involved in physical therapy, massages, and so forth. It lists the kind of massages that are appropriate. It lists a tremendous amount of detail on what you have to furnish as far as your training, your background, and your business plan. And that was to get some control on it. From a statewide basis, so it'd be uniform. And it might sort of inhibit the more enterprising practice of massage. So people were all licensed under that, but we wanted to know, well, are you working with a business? So this ordinance was passed, the old ordinance shut down, and this one is a little more up-to-date. We recognize the licenses that exist, and we provide exemptions that are legitimate based on the license that's been received from the state and the training that the people have gone through. And that, I think, is renewed every two or three years. So they always have to be regularly licensed on that. And we have other exemptions from it, which deal with medical practitioners that can do it, barber shops, under the barber shop salon statute that passed maybe 2005, they could have massage in those facilities, and they were allowed. And there are other training exceptions as well, athletic trainer who's authorized to do it, people conducting programs for students in an institution that provides services under the act, an individual licensed, in our section, I put six, who's licensed under any other act that performs services, but not those that are described specifically in that act, but it may be therapeutic or of a health nature. And I added under that section of the healthcare code of 1978. That section no longer exists, so if you adopt this, that will be deleted. And the act itself, 78, there's a new health code act now, but that should be changed just to the current health code. And that way, you get around all these amendments all the time. The current health code act is about 58 pages long with various sections. But it does provide certain types of therapy in that, that are not necessarily massage therapy, but of that nature, as a particular course in some subtle aspect of healthcare. What we're really getting at are the people that I will describe who set up the mom-and-pop sessions in neighborhoods and received money for that and are not licensed at all, at least with the city. You've seen in the paper recently Troy had a situation where in a residential neighborhood there was activity in a residence involving the more salacious activity, and eventually the police got a warrant to bust it. And they got a lot of cash, they got a lot of drugs, and they got a lot of people arrested as a result of it and embarrassed. Those are the things we want to prevent. Now, there are people that may come in and want to do the legitimate massage, but they're not connected with anything. We want to have some control that that's done in an area that's not going to be a problem on a residential neighborhood. So we want to have the registration, so we're allowed to figure out, okay, you're going to do a massage business, we know you're licensed by the state, you're not connected with a salon, you're not connected with another massage business, where are you going to conduct this business? And what is your business plan? That's the thing, is to monitor that. It also is the ability to have control over it from a licensing standpoint. In other words, if we find out the activity is different than what was represented, we can immediately show cause then before the council to have a hearing to have their license lifted. So there is a mechanism in there that's expedient to try to monitor the legitimate, control the illegitimate, and get fast action if someone has a complaint about their license being lifted. It's a whole process. And it's much shorter than the older one. I think it's about two pages, maybe three.
I had a question. It talks here about being limited to commercial and business areas within boundaries of the public purpose, blah, blah, blah. Don't we have some areas that were recently rezoned as business slash, so people, like their housing slash businesses?
Yeah, home practice, yeah. And there are those that would probably be an exception, but you've got to find out what the nature of the activity is. Because we do allow some home businesses, and they're expressly stated in your ordinance.
So someone would be able to do a home-type thing?
They should be able to if they really show the requirements about record-keeping, hours, traffic control, so forth.
So they have to establish that they have a business plan or that it's a business?
That is true.
Okay.
That's true. Because remember, it's our obligation to protect the public health, safety, and welfare as we perceive it.
Right.
And as it applies to a particular situation. That's traditionally been our responsibility, so we want to be sure we maintain that.
And we're allowed to ask for all of the business plan, all that kind of stuff, within this ordinance? I don't remember.
Well, when they register internally, they'll adopt the regulations and say, we like a business plan.
Oh, I see. Okay, there you go.
We'd like to say exactly, yeah. And it's on the attachments that I think that are there as well.
Yep, copy of Plan of Operation for Business, so that would get that information.
So, yeah, we gave you the forms, or Mike did, I think. And that's the format of this whole thing. So it's up to you to decide whether you want to go on a first reading on this with the amendment that I suggested on the deletion in sub-paragraph, I think, six. Yeah, six, on exceptions. And that can be in the revised draft presented to you on a second reading.
Does such an amendment need to be part of our motion today?
Yeah, you can adopt the first reading with the suggested change as recommended by legal counsel in sub-paragraph six of section 18-152.
Mr. Kingsep, you talked about businesses that are called out in ordinance as allowed to be run in homes, home businesses.
Yeah.
So would this fall under what is currently defined as a home business?
I'm going to have to look at that, because you may have to amend that.
Okay.
But I will look at that, and I'll report back at the next meeting. That's a good observation.
If we want to allow that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if that were to occur, and I'll have the opinion for you at the next meeting, what you could do is adopt the second reading and then shoestring, maybe at that time I'll make an amendment on that section of the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a motion? Your Honor, I move that the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, with the, do I say with the exception?
Amendment?
Amendment.
Yeah, with the changes on sub-paragraph six.
With the changes on sub-paragraph six of section 18.1.52. Businesses and adding new Article IV, right?
Right.
Massage therapy providing for the licensing and regulation for such services and determining determination of exceptions for such licensings be entered into first reading.
Support.
Are there any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Albrecht.
Yes.
Councilmember Eris.
Yes.
Before we go any further, I did want to address, these are spring decorations. They may appear as if somebody is ill or no longer with us, but spring decorations place there for today. First day of spring. If anybody was distracted by that. The next item of business is consideration of the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Article I, in general, by adding Section 54-13 exemptions and to create a new Chapter 55, Mobile Food Vending. This ordinance is regarding the regulations and application process for permitting vending, serving, or offering for sale food, beverages, and/or related merchandise from any motorized or non-motorized car, cart, stand, trailer vehicle, or other device designed to be portable and not permanently attached to the ground within the city on public or private property, also known as food trucks. And again, I'll ask Mr. Kingsep to explain the ordinance.
Yes, this was brought up before in 2017. And there was legitimate objection to it by food businesses within town, not having food trucks outside their premises by an independent competing with them. And as a result, and they were very legitimate observations, so as a result, the ordinance was changed to allow the food trucks on private property with approval, and also to have food trucks in the park, which was a suggestion of where they should be, again, through a proper permitting process. The ordinance itself is regulatory in the sense that anyone who's going to conduct this type of business has to go through a lot of regulations. They have to meet the regulations, the Oakland County Health Department, and they have to meet our regulations regarding the service of the food, the location, the permitting, and so forth. As everyone knows, food trucks are the thing. You go to any big city, and they are there. If we have more activities in Claussen Park during the summer, they're going to be there, and they're going to be popular. In fact, right now, Recreation Department is working with the school district on the Oakland County Football Club having their games in the Claussen Park. There'll be seven games in the summer. They attract 700 people per game. It's a professional group of soccer players. And they used to play in Royal Oak, but Royal Oak is fixing their field, and they have no field, and so they met with Recreation Department, and I worked on a draft agreement regarding that. And it was before the school board, I think, at the last meeting, and I think they gave a hurrah to it. I haven't seen any affirmative action from that, but on that statement, just a smile. But it seems that there's no opposition from the school district. School district controls the locker room, so they have to be part of the agreement. They'll get some compensation for that use, staff use. We get compensation as well for monitoring the hours that staff is on. But it could be a boon to the city as far as business activity, and certainly, if you adopt this ordinance, you know food trucks will be there on those days. But that's just an example. I mean, when you have other activities in the park, there may be another occasion which food trucks come as well. So there are those opportunities. But again, this is your business judgment call. This is more of a business judgment call than it is a legal issue. The requirements are there to protect the public. The limitations are there as far as where they can go, which addresses the concern of the commercial food establishments. So it's in your hands now.
So it references a map, which I didn't see to be included. And I think that's kind of an important piece for consideration.
There were some bulleted points that talk about where it would be allowed, but I did not see.
Yeah, I don't think we did have the map. Well, that's weird, so that's our fault.
The other.
But you'll have that.
Okay. The other thing I have a question about is it talks about no fee shall be charged to an honorably discharged veteran, which is cool, but it doesn't say, like, is it just the veteran that's bringing in the application for the permit? Or do they have to be a principal owner in the organization? Or do they have to? I mean, I think there needs some qualifications around.
What section was that?
That's 55-4, Section B.
B, okay, I will do that clarification.
And then I also saw that we didn't, so are we saying here that if, on the fee schedule, we're, so there's a fee schedule on whatever page this is?
Yeah.
It's zero if you are, there's a zero here of city-based food establishment operating on non-city property. I assume that's a missing number there, as opposed to it being zero?
I'll have to ask Mike on that. So we'll clarify that.
That was my list of questions.
I had some other questions.
Sure, go ahead.
For one, the city of El Paso settled a lawsuit with the Institute for Justice after the courts found that their ordinances were too restrictive and that were placing undue burden on business owners. Now, their buffer zone, I think, was 1,500 feet, if I'm not mistaken, and they were creating basically zones where these food trucks were not allowed to operate. And I'm just concerned from a legal standpoint that we run into something like that.
I will look at that case.
And the Institute for Justice is also involved in a lawsuit against the city of Baltimore revolving around the same thing, and their buffer zone is only 300 feet. I say only, but their buffer zone is less than that, 300 feet.
What is that, the Institute for what?
Institute for Justice is involved in these lawsuits, and I would hate to put ourselves in a position where.
Good point.
We are calling upon you to defend our ordinance.
That's true. I mean, I have done that before, but then if you can avoid it, you try to avoid it.
I agree.
That's the key, because you don't need to pay a lawyer then.
That's a good thing. I do think food trucks help bolster a city's small-business-friendly image, which I think is what we'd like to do here in our city. One thing I am concerned about with this ordinance is that it will apply to ice cream trucks, and we talked about this.
I thought they were specifically called out and exempted from it when I read it.
Were they?
Yeah.
Okay, I might have missed that, and I'll have to review that.
Okay.
My apologies if that's the case. There are instructions to the food truck operators, and it says, "Waste shall not be disposed of in city receptacles." It talks about putting trash bins out and where it says, "Waste shall not be disposed of in city receptacles." Is this talking about the food truck operators should not dispose of waste, or their customers? Because I don't know that we.
Which section is that?
Well, that's in the application, actually. I don't think it's.
Application.
Yeah, I don't think it's part of the actual ordinance. And that was, it's under the bulleted section, page seven of the application.
Yeah, okay.
I think, or maybe page six, I'm sorry, page six.
We'll check into that.
It says that food trucks are not permitted within one block of a city event or special event, and it says, "As outlined under the special event operating procedures."
Yeah.
And that's what you spoke to right before our meeting, you and I were talking about this, but the special event operating procedures, and I'd hate to pass this ordinance referencing something that doesn't exist.
Well, that's true, and we're hoping that that will exist at times.
Okay.
But at least it's in there, just so you know.
Yeah.
There's going to be some connection between the two. And again, you know, you can wait, I mean, you can get clarification on this, as you've mentioned tonight, and the case law as well, that I saw Renus contribute, raises his hand, he wanted to contribute to that.
Oh, okay.
And so we'll be able to get that information to you, and then if we can get the special event to you, it might coincide with the first reading of this.
Okay.
Then I think you'd be able to tie bar the two.
Okay.
Are we trying to, like, get it in before the first of the soccer things? Is that kind of a?
No, there wasn't any, no, there wasn't any import on that, as much as it is that it has been an outstanding issue. And now might be the appropriate time, because it's sort of a dead period, I shouldn't say that, because you're always involved in business affecting the city, but from the standpoint of immediate issues before you, because you're going into budget as well. So we thought that this would be the more appropriate time to really get it done. And it is better as a seasonal, summer, fall event, and that's basically when we start is in May going forward. So that was how we approached it.
Yeah.
But again, it's, you know, in your lap from the standpoint of timing, that's your call.
Okay.
And you want to be satisfied that we give you the information that you've asked tonight and more.
Okay. Along with that, where it says, "They're not permitted within one block of a city event," one block isn't defined, and I don't know, is that just a term that is generally known what one block is, or?
Well, you're very adroit, because if I represented a food truck, a block would be the shortest distance I could imagine.
True.
With some rationale.
Right.
So your point's well taken.
Okay.
So I'm going to have to check to see whether we have that definition in the Land Development Code.
Or we could put it in the ordinance, one block, not less than X, or something like that?
That depends on the Land Development Code, so you've got to think about that. But I'll check that out.
And I'm sorry, still.
Go for it.
No, go for it.
The part of this ordinance is allowing liquor vending from food trucks.
Yeah.
Under specific.
Right.
Specific conditions have to be met. I'd love to see that just go away.
That, we put it in there, because you may as well consider it, and if you want to get rid of it, that's fine. So if that's your sense.
I would rather, if I can, I would rather leave it in and clearly, or leave the option be the special conditions, like it being a special secondary permanent or something like, permit or something like that. That leaves us the option for not to have to rewrite and adopt everything, but consider the permitting to, you know, fit the rules that we want at the time, so that having the permitting be more restrictive in leaving the option in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, are you suggesting, if I can question you on that, are you suggesting that if you adopt a special event ordinance, and you have special events that may have liquor involved in it, that you would look at the feasibility of a food truck serving liquor at that event as well?
Yeah, can we just put the liquor part of it always being in a special event, so it's always a special permit that you need? So you could have liquor if you get, because what if there's something, someone invents, say, Claussen wine or something like that? I mean, it could happen, right? And we want to be able to promote that within the city. We don't want to have to rewrite an ordinance or anything like that for that special circumstance, but have the option through the special events to be able to permit that on, you know, one-by-one basis without having to redo the whole thing.
Sure.
Well, then if we do that, then.
Good idea.
Can we also have areas that we exclude liquor from being, I mean, do we have to state that too? Because some people don't want liquor in the park, because the park is used for, you know, family-friendly events, and they just don't want, there's enough stuff that gets in there without approval. So do we write something specific that says these areas will be exempt?
Well, there's an ordinance already that says in any park you can't serve liquor.
But then are people who are going to bring the food trucks there, are they going to say, but you allow us here? So is there an exemption? You know what I mean? Like, just to make it simple.
Conflicting.
Well, we'll make it, yeah, no, we'll make it simple. I think it will be identified in some manner. And I think maybe the special event ordinance might be the one that would key that, because that would be the limitation, that would be the situation and the limiting situation in which any liquor would be served. So, yeah, let's work on that and look at the other ordinance, special events to put that into and take it out of here.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, if we could specify even that the liquor belongs in an enclosed area or gated area, because we don't want, what we don't want is these special events occurring, and people just wander in the streets with open alcohol, right?
Well, there's still alcohol laws.
Yeah, that's true, but remember, you had an event this past summer.
Yes.
Comic-Con, Comic-Con, and if you have that again, that's an event that's going to serve.
But that was in a very controlled area. You couldn't go out of a certain area with the liquor and whatnot.
That's true, it was. And, but you never know whether there may be an intention to try to expand the area as well, too. So you want to, I think, if you believe that that event attracted business and was beneficial to the community, then always keep that in mind as a type of event that's going to have liquor and a special exception to that. Now, then the thought is whether you want to limit it just to that type of event.
I have two more things.
Go ahead.
Bear with me, please.
You've got a mind.
Don't apologize.
When it comes to the fines and the penalties for this, I would love to see some sort of incrementally increasing fine for a second or third offense, because what I've learned is that some of these food trucks, if they find a sweet spot, and, you know, every time they do it, they get a ticket for a few hundred bucks, they might just consider it the cost of doing business. So I'd love to see that.
Okay, well, we already do that on some of our ordinances. We have a scale, so it gives the prosecutors the opportunity, under the appropriate circumstances, to weigh in on that. And I would say that if you do that here, I mean, I'll talk to the prosecutors about it to determine the amount or extent, if any, of leniency they want to do on a subsequent offense. In other words, not having the higher for the second effect, but somewhat between the first offense and the second offense, so there's flexibility.
Sure.
Because always there's maneuvering if you're a prosecutor. Because always there's maneuvering, if you're a prosecutor, given the number of cases you have, and our prosecutors have a lot, that you want to try to go things quickly as possible, and case disposition is important both through the court as well as prosecution. So, but we'll weigh that.
And my final comment is that with this proposed ordinance, we received a, kind of a review of local, and I'm not going to be able to find it quickly here, but a review of local municipalities that have similar ordinances, and the fees that we're proposing are prohibitive, in my opinion, that if somebody wanted to have a food truck, they're not going to come to Klaassen based on these fees.
They're for a year, though. I thought that at first, too, but the $1,000 is for an entire year, which didn't seem unreasonable to me.
And I don't disagree with you, except for that
Compared to the other ones.
Surrounding communities.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I mean, we're adopting fees that are commensurate with Traverse City, right? I mean, that's the only municipality. One, Traverse City is a lot larger, it's going to afford more foot traffic. I think the business case is probably better, and also Traverse City doesn't have as much competition in their area, and so they might have a monopoly, so to speak, on this. So, their fee might be readily accepted by a food truck, whereas Klaassen charging that kind of fee seems, to me, exorbitant.
Okay. I don't dispute what you're saying, but again, that is a business decision you all make. You shouldn't have the lawyers make that decision.
Sure.
So, I think, you know, in the interim, think about, and maybe, maybe do some independent Facebook research on the fees and some justification behind it, because that is more a business decision of your call.
Did you establish these fees, or who, did the clerk establish?
Mike, I think, established them based on his contact, you know, former, your former assistant city attorney is a Traverse City attorney, and I know he talked to Lauren about those, the fees up there, and it is different. But there are similarities up there where there aren't restaurants around, because it's a bigger geographic area, and so they're away from the city center. And they're attracted, it depends, too, on the number of attractions that they have up there, which are probably far more than you have down here. So, that's a difference as well.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
And then, are there any other questions? I was going to ask Renus Nushai, he's our city prosecutor, one of our prosecuting attorneys. If you could approach the mic, you said you had some information regarding the lawsuits around food trucks.
The case that you mentioned, yes, I'm familiar. I drafted an opinion just around the time when that case was still raging, before the opinion came out for a client of mine, so I'm familiar with it, and it is, it can be restrictive, but I think our ordinance would pass muster. I think after you craft, probably these changes that you're, based on your questions, that I think you want to craft, and then some of those perhaps finer definitions with respect to something like a city block, I think we'll be fine in that regard. I'll give you an opinion. I do have the paperwork already, so I did raise my hand, and John was very
That's good.
I did raise my hand on that one, so I'll send you an opinion, and John, obviously, through John, Mr. King, if I mean, with respect to that, so you'll have that. With respect to fines and costs, what we always ask on our end as prosecutors is, allow us the highest fine possible, which is up to $500, and then allow us, you know, the opportunity to be able to maneuver and to negotiate while there. And we do keep in mind, when we do negotiate for purposes of, you know, our prosecutions, we do keep in mind, we always keep track, and the clerk always, the clerks of the court always include the old files, as do our own paralegals at the office, the prior files, so we know exactly how many times there's been violations in the past. So, we do consider that. We won't do away with that. But limiting us on the early offenses probably doesn't do us any favors.
Understood.
You want to give us the maximum, usually, from the beginning, because obviously the municipalities do have limited amounts of funds that they can, you know, charge someone on these violations. So, give us a chance, and we'll make sure to bring back the money.
I appreciate that input very much.
My pleasure, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Renus.
Are there any other questions?
No, I'm fine.
So, at this point
Just refer back to administration.
Is that a motion to be made?
Yeah, you should make a motion.
All right.
Mayor, I move that we refer the ordinance back to administration for additional tweaking.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Support.
Okay. Are there one final, any questions or comments about that motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
And the motion has passed. The next item of business is consideration of the list of bills as presented.
Mr. Mayor, pay the bills.
Is there a support?
Support.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
The motion has passed. City attorneys report.
Two things, Mr. Mayor Protam, and members of the council. Planning commission for some time in the city has often been requested for temporary certificates of occupancy. Site plans have been approved, in part, where the building is now ready for occupancy, but there are things that are delayed for any number of circumstances that have to be done later on. And we've been fairly lenient in that, although we've increasingly become more attuned to the fact that promises without some form of bondage are not good, because we always get into trouble. So, we've been doing different types of things, imposing bonds or some form of security. We did one, we've done that with Kimco, when they kicked in $100,000 and gave it to the city to hold pending their completion of the shopping center improvements. We got a recent one for $25,000, and that was for site plan problems and expenses that had to be done, and that was done at the last commission meeting last week. And I will tell you that by Thursday, by Wednesday, I had several conversations, and this dealt with Haberman Fabrics, and I had several conversations with the owner, and by Wednesday, we had the surety connected, and Thursday, we had a draft form sent to me, and on Friday, which he wanted to open, he went in, and I think he signed it, or else he signed it Friday, or he's signing it today, because it was coming by mail, but they showed me the bond. I was satisfied with it, so there you go, that's it. In these situations, we have some unusual things which raise legal questions, and that's because of facts that are just strange to the particular situation, like one involving the DDA plans on what's required, and a screen wall was required on one site, and the tenant was submitting the site plan, and the tenant was supposed to pay for that, and there was, that was a conundrum. Now, why should the tenant pay for a screen wall, which is a permanent fixture that benefits the landlord and not necessarily the tenant? Fortunately, that did work out. I mean, I saw the bond, there is a bond. I haven't had clarification on it, but I'm told that it has been clarified. So, when I see it, I'll be able to tell you that it went on successfully. But those are the things that you get with your ordinances, unintended consequences that just sort of arise, and so it's difficult to do, have some consistency. So, I'm doing a form performance bond to submit to the planning commission next week, and I'm really of the view, there has to be some flexibility. I mean, it can be the standard terms, and you can show people what that really means, but the ones who are really bound to it, in addition to the owner, is the surety, who's picking up the guarantee to perform. And that connection never, it comes about when you're going through site plan review, and when they come in and they want a TCO. So, there are always these wrinkles that happen afterwards. But we're trying to have some consistency on some security to make sure that the owner, operator, who wants a TCO, performs what has to be done, when it's supposed to be done.
So, the point of that was to tell us that
We need to look at the ordinances?
There's consistency.
No, you don't have to look at the ordinances, because once you get a bond like that, and we have done this on the DPW building, where it was constructed, and we had a bond on it, and the wall caved in, and the bonding company stepped up and paid the city the balance of the money to restore the wall. So, that's what it is, really, is you can go right against the surety and say, "Okay, you can either do it at your expense, up to that amount, or you can turn the money over to us, and we'll find someone to do it."
So, did you say you're submitting a form to the planning commission? What is
I'm giving the form to the planning commission, because I'll be the ones handling it all the time. You'll hear the aftermath of it.
Okay.
You'll never see it, generally, at all. But they need, they need some assurance to say, "Well, maybe we can show the people something, so they know what they're up against." But again, it has to be very guarded on it, because these things change. You're dealing with third parties who aren't even in the game at that point.
Right.
And you don't know what type of security is going to come up. It can be cash, it can be a surety bond, it can be a regular performance bond. Those are two different things. And then you have to deal with the surety on the language in their bond, because it doesn't always fit your situation. The bond that we got on the screen wall, and I had never knew this, I mean, that's why I love the law, you're always getting educated. It was an insurance company, auto owners, that provided the performance bond. I've always said, "You're a car company, a car insurance company. What's with this?" But, so, I talked to the fellow, and I said, "You know, you'd be a perfect referral. Why don't you send me an email, because do you do bonds hire?" And he said, "Yeah, we do. We just did a $3 million one." I said, "Give me the information, because we'll refer everyone to you." Well, he hasn't gotten back with me, which is terrible, because I don't have a list, and I don't want to have a list to tell the applicant. It should be somewhat independent.
When we, I was on planning when the Kimco thing occurred, and that was a little bit of a struggle to get them to agree to actually pull that bond, and I do believe that we just told them to go out and get one, right?
Yeah.
We didn't really have any directions for them. So, are you saying that what you've put together is a list of guidelines for what they will need to meet when they bring back a bond to?
Well, it basically is what the terms of the bond will be.
Right.
So, they're familiar with that, which is basically, you have to perform this within a certain period of time. If you don't, then the bonding company or surety can come in and do it themselves, in accordance with the site plan, and up to the amount of it, or we can take it over, and we'll get someone to do it. I also, I also put in that bond, and I feel comfortable about it from a legal standpoint, but if we give a TCO and they don't comply, I put in there that we have the right to yank the TCO, and there's no damage claim that they can arise against us because of that, because they defaulted. So, that's in there as well.
So, if I could just take 60 seconds and sum up what we're talking about for
Very much better than me.
The average viewer out there, every business that opens in Klaassen, and anybody stop me at any time, please, but every business is required to submit a site plan that specifies the layout of their building, the landscaping, and other aspects of their building, and so there are certain things that are required, absolutely required, in order to open a business, whether it be electrical, plumbing, fire suppression, things like that. If they are part of the site plan, they're required before a business can open. There are other things like landscaping or parking lots, that depending on the situation, could be put off until after the business is open. And so, in that case, they don't receive their certificate of occupancy, but they receive a temporary certificate of occupancy, and that's dependent on them completing the items, the rest of the items in the site plan. What we've had is businesses get a TCO, a temporary certificate of occupancy, and then they don't complete the things specified in the site plan, and we have sometimes very little recourse to get those things accomplished. So, what we are requiring these businesses to do is to bond, or to basically give us money that we hold until they complete those items, and if they don't complete them in a timely manner, then we use that money and go out and get them, get the items accomplished. Does that
Well stated.
Sum it up? Okay.
Much better than a lawyer.
Well, not in every case.
Not in every, no.
Not in every case.
Again, there's always some flexibility here.
Yeah, what's your gut feeling on that Haberman deal? I mean, I watched the planning commission, so you know, I was busy.
It really worked out very well. It really worked out, and Mark, I had several conversations before then, and then after that meeting with him. He was very cooperative, and he went out and really bit the bullet and got the bond, and he made a good presentation.
Mm-hmm.
And he had, he had a rationale behind why he didn't want to post security right then and there, because his improvements are about 80K or more, beyond the site plan. And, and so, what he was doing, because everyone knew that he needed to get in, so their bids were high. And what he wanted to do was get the TCO and then get other proposals and bring his pricing down. So, it was a smart business move on his
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay. Thanks. We'll look forward to further report about that.
Yep.
You said you had something else?
No, no, that's it, that's it.
Okay. City managers report.
Just to update on budget preparations, which are underway. I had my first meetings with a couple of department heads today. Those will continue into next week. And then we did establish the council budget workshops, which will be, and I'll remind, as we get closer, April 27th, 28th, and 30th. And we generally have three workshops to accomplish getting through the entire budget and the department head's presentation. I did start working on kind of a budget summary for some of the questions that seem to come every year, so that council will kind of understand line item-wise, how many people are assigned to each department, each fund, and some of those breakdowns to make the budget make more sense. That's part of what I'm working on now, and you'll have that before we start our workshops. So, I've made good progress on some of those things that we talked about. So, I'm, and I won't say I'm excited about the budget, because once you've done about 20 of them, they're not necessarily exciting, but it's a process that takes about two months to get through. So, I'm happy to get it started and get it underway, so, and that's all I have.
Mr. Pollock, what were the dates again for that?
April 27th, 28th, and 30th.
Okay, I have the 24th and the 25th.
I'm sorry, you're right, 24th.
Okay.
24th, which is a Tuesday, 25th, which is a Wednesday, and then 30th, which is a Monday.
Okay.
So, you're right.
Just wanted to make sure I clarified that. Thank you. Any questions? Is there any unfinished business to address?
Yeah, I got a question to ask Mark. I just found out last night, we've been having so many meetings, I've been missing all the Lions Club meetings on Monday. So, we, I just found out last night, when we have our White Kane coming up, and that's going to be the same time it's going to be doing the construction, and we were told we could not go in the streets, which I can see yes, and can see no, you know. If we're only going to be out there Saturday and Sunday on two weekends, I don't know what the problem would be.
You know the dates now?
You know, Greg, you got the dates?
You can get them to me. I'll see if we can work around construction to be out, because 14 and Main would be the main intersection
Right, right.
You're at, so
Yeah, that'd be it.
The other intersections you're at won't be impacted. It would just be 14 and Main, and we can certainly see if we can work around construction.
Sure. Sure. One more page.
I know that's a big fundraiser for you, so.
Yeah, yeah. I've done it. I didn't write them down.
I did see those on the calendar. I don't know that I'm going to be able to find it quickly.
That's pretty sure. Nope, don't have, sorry.
Sorry.
Or I can have somebody get in touch with you tomorrow and.
That would be fine.
Give you our exact dates and stuff, but.
And I'll get with Harry and AEW and see if we can work around.
Yeah, we don't need, I don't believe we need to be out there Fridays. I mean, it's good. But I mean, if we're going to have construction going back and forth, I don't see a problem Saturday and Sunday using it.
Okay. And if lanes are closed, though, traffic will be slower.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's.
Traffic might also be diverted, though. You might not get as much traffic through there.
Yeah. Anyways.
Something to consider. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any new business to discuss? All right. Buckle in. It's a busy time. Let's look at community events. We did have a fantastic brunch last week for the state of the city, the state of the schools, and Chamber of Commerce. And congratulations, go to the business person of the year, Kim Alexopoulos of the Clausen Steakhouse. The Business of the Year was awarded to TNI Credit Union on Main Street. And the award for putting Clausen on the map went to the Yarn Stop in downtown Clausen. Volunteer of the Year was awarded to Clive Brown for his work with the Clausen Lions Club. And he does a lot more than that as well. So thank you to all of those who have contributed to Clausen continuing to be a great community. In upcoming events, it is a busy time for the Blair Memorial Library. The library is hosting a presentation entitled Boomtown Detroit in the 1920s, tomorrow, March 21st, at 6:30 PM. It is sponsored by Clausen's Historical Museum. The description says, "From the dust and smoke of the 19th century, Detroit burst into the national spotlight in the early 20th century. The automobile business was at full throttle, resulting in a city that grew faster than any other on the continent. Rum-running, conventions, and organized crime, Boomtown meets the Wild West." So sounds like an exciting event. Also, at the Blair Memorial Library, there will be Fort Night. Not talking about the two-week period, Fort Night. Come to the library on Thursday, March 22nd, from 6:30 to 7:30 for an after-hours event. Bring blankets, sheets, and pillows to build your own reading fort in the stacks. We will provide the books and a fun campout snack. Pajamas and flashlights are welcome, too. Please register with the library for the Fort Night. And then finally, for the library, March is Membership Drive Month for the Friends of the Blair Memorial Library. Join or renew in March to be entered into a drawing to win a prize from a local Clausen business. Individual, individual memberships are $10 for the year, and family memberships are $20 for the year. And through, through their fundraising efforts, Friends of the Library are able to provide direct financial assistance to purchase materials not provided for in the library budget. This Saturday, the Easter Bunny will be around town. Easter egg hunt at Clausen City Park this Saturday, March 24th. It's for ages one to 12. Bring a basket and a camera. Does anybody use a camera anymore? They just use their phone, right? Grandmas will bring their cameras, okay. That starts at 10 o'clock and ends at 10:02, famously. Then the Easter Bunny will be at the Bunny Brunch at Hunter Community Center that same day, but tickets are sold out. So next year, you have to get those tickets a little earlier. Coming up on April 7th, Saturday, the Tables of Treasure and Indoor Garage Sale starts at 9:00 AM and lasts until 2:00 PM. It is touted as an eclectic indoor sale where you might find some treasures and also food and baked goods. And all proceeds benefit the Clausen Senior Center. And finally, I have a flyer here for the Swing into Spring Auction and Dinner on Friday, April 20th. The benefits, the proceeds benefit the Clausen Chamber of Commerce. A silent auction is accompanied by an excellent dinner. You can contact the Chamber at 248-435-6500 for tickets and sponsorship opportunities. That's all I have for community events. Now's the time for public discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to address council at this time? Although we all know you, please state your name and address.
Andrea Hodges, 510 West Baker. I see we're not supposed to talk about items not on the agenda, items not on the agenda. So I guess I want to make a comment of when you get your revised Chapter 55 for the mobile food vending. When you get that to be reviewed, so that's a couple, probably another month or whatever. I just want you guys to keep in mind that the schools hold fundraisers and for the PTOs and PTAs. I haven't read this, so you might already have the answer. But I guess there's fees involved. So I'm thinking if this food truck vendors have to pay these fees to come to this fundraiser for the schools, they might not want to pay that to come to this fundraiser. So I just want to, you guys keep that in mind. And also, from the one-block special event, I'm not sure, again, what your one-block definition is. But the school, the high school is close proximity to the downtown area, and that could be considered a block. And if they had food vendor trucks at the high school for something, that could conflict with your ordinance. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind, that the schools do do these things with these vendors. And they do have the ones that have the carts that go behind, too. They do go to those. And I do know that they do go to the high school for events. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion? Public discussion is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm out of, adjourned.
Support?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers? Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Albrecht?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.